So good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the Harwich Planning Board Meeting of December 9th, 2025. My name is Duncan Berry. I'm the Chair of this Board. I'm just looking around for a flag with which we can do a recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance, but seeing none, declare the meeting open at 6:31. According to Mass General Law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, then inform other attendees to start. Is there anybody here that intends to record this meeting? Okay, very good. So tonight, we have one primary piece of business this evening. We have a public hearing that's been continued from May 13th, 2025, June 10th, 2025, July 8th, 2025, August 26th, 2025, September 23rd, 2025, October 28th, 2025, and November 18th, 2025. Case is PB 2025-11, SSH Port LLC, Robert C. DeMarco, Manager, One Campanelli Drive, Braintree, Mass, 084, through their agent Marion Rose Esquire, Singer and Singer Law Office, 26 Upper County Road, Dennis, Mass 02639, seeks approval for a multifamily special permit in site plan review, special permit, with request for waivers. Proposed project is to construct a 28-unit multifamily structure in reconfigured parking. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, Sections 325-51, 325-55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11. Property is located at 606 Route 28, Assessors Map 14, Parcel 218-2. The parcel is approximately 76,226 square feet. The parcel is in the commercial village, CV, and residential low-density L zoning districts, and within the village commercial overlay district, DCOD. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Marion, who is a singer and singer, happy to be with you all again. In terms of our presentation tonight, I'm going to make introductions and update on what's happened since our last hearing on October 28th. Russ Dean, the architect from Campanelli, will provide updates on revised architectural plans. Jeff Wyman, also from Campanelli, will update on landscape, open spaces, and lighting plans. Garrett Horstall, Kelly Engineering, will review the revised site and stormwater plans. And I'll recap at the end. In terms of updates to the special permit application, at the October 28th, 2025 meeting, the majority of the board members and town planner both indicated their support of the condominium multifamily use project. But we did not have a supermajority, an indication of supermajority support. So at that time, we paused to consider whether to ask for a vote on the condominium plan or to provide a further revised plan to respond to some of the concerns of the minority board members. And as you all can see, we have provided revised plans. Revised plans are for a 28-unit multifamily use. But this multifamily use is an apartment use rather than a condominium use. What that allowed applicant to do is to respond to some of the massing and density concerns of the minority board members. That's because the market allows for smaller units, which also allow for a subsequent smaller footprint and coverage on the site and other reductions as we go through it. The program, building and site revisions, that you have before you today to consider, and it's the apartment plan that we're asking you to consider, are designed for a smaller building. It will provide for housing for fewer people than the condominium plan because it's reducing the number of bedrooms from 60 to 41, still having those 28 units. And it will bring in more single-family home-like design features into the project. Russ will get into the elevations and the site design in particular, or the building structure design in particular. But before that, I wanted to review the project essentially by the numbers. So as you're looking at the site plan, sometimes it's hard to see the site plans and really grasp how much, and town planners describe this as substantial response to massing and density concerns, but the numbers really do tell the story. I can walk and shoot them at the same time, but I'll try to do this. So you can see the residence type is changing from ownership to rental, and that's what really generates the ability to make the project smaller. The parking under the building is eliminated. The common roof decks are eliminated. When you look at the plans, you'll see that the smaller private values are still there. The average unit size, it was 1,731 square feet. Now, the average size is less than 1,000 square feet, which is really what the market demands as apartment rental. Traffic, although it's still 28 units, so technically it's looked at in the same way. We believe and VHB agree in the comments that as a practical matter, there will be fewer people on the site, so the trips will light even less than anticipated under the 28-unit condominium development. The recreational area is increased, and you'll see that among our waivers, we no longer need the waiver for the multifamily use recreational area. We're providing about 14% for that. Architectural style, Russ will get into this, like reutilizing architectural styles from the neighborhood, those single-family architectural styles. At the same time, I just want to emphasize that there are many other buildings in the commercial district in which this building is proposed that are not single-family dwellings. That's evident because it's a commercial district. And there are large buildings like the Melrose and like 575, and other buildings up and down back corridor that also are part of the neighborhood in which this development With building reductions, one of the main, most significant impactful building reductions when you're looking at this project from Route 28 is the height of the building. For multifamily, the height can be up to 40 feet. We have always proposed a development here that's conforming to the dimensional requirements of multifamily bylaw. It started at almost 40 feet back in March when we applied. We reduced that height to the 36.8 back in June. Now, the height is under the height of a single-family building maximum. That height as proposed is 29 feet 4.4. The mass and the scale, that's, I call it the volume of the building. The volume of the building under the condominium, I think I can get this so everyone can hear. Under the condominium was 6,000, sorry, 600,000 and change. Under the apartment, the cubic square feet is 353,873 cubic feet. That's a reduction of 42%. Similarly, the area, which is the above-ground area, and here, all of the area is above-ground. There is no basement. There is no underground parking. But the above-ground area in the condominium project, not including the basement, was 59,251 square feet. And with the apartment, it's 35,174 square feet for a reduction of 41%. It follows the footprint's smaller. The footprint here, for the condominium, was 21,937 square feet. The apartment, 17,587 square feet for a reduction of 20%. Those gross floor area and footprint numbers, you know I'm going to mention the Melrose. The Melrose, we have a slide on that, and it's significantly smaller than the Melrose across the street. We'll go into particulars on that later on. The bedrooms, as I've mentioned, 60 bedrooms for the condominium, 41 bedrooms for the apartment. And population is just an estimate. We're estimating that there are, with the condominium development with 60 bedrooms, two people per bedroom, we're estimating at a max 120 people would be using that structure for the apartment. We estimate 82 people for a reduction of 32%. With lot coverage, the condominium was at 60%. Again, conforming with the apartment, it's lower at 55%. I do want to mention, it's not a part of this slide, but the existing site coverage is 56.5%. So what's proposed is actually less than the existing site coverage with the Southern School project now. The natural area, and to us, that means the lawn and the landscaped area, is increasing by 3,500 square feet roughly. The front setback, and this, the front setback at its closest is 26.7 feet, but you'll see in the slides that we're going to show you that the footprint of the apartment development actually rotates and is not perpendicular to Route 28. So what happens is it's not uniformly, it's not at a uniform distance from Route 28. The closest is 26.7 feet, but at the furthest point, it's almost 40 feet away. That's towards the ember side. So there's more buffer to 28, and again, the height is less. So it's a significant impact to how this is going to feel as you're walking on the sideways, we're driving down Route 28. And because the number of bedrooms is smaller by 19 bedrooms, the septic flow is actually significantly less. By 32 gallons per day is 32% less, and the nitrogen load is also less. At this point, I'm going to let Russ get into particulars on the structures design.
Good evening, members of the Board, and to the folks that came out this full evening. Thank you. Our goal with this modified plan is our goal from the very beginning, which is to create a very desirable living community within a very desirable village neighborhood. That goal remains paramount for any living project to be successful. Similar to our previously presented condominium community, we've used many similar and familiar architectural styles and elements in our project. We've continued to research the CAPE for different types of elements, and more importantly, in this revised apartment community, we've narrowed our search and discovery of local architectural elements and precedents to those within our immediate neighborhood. As you can see in this slide over on this map, the red represents our site and examples of homes with blue stars represented on this map. And I apologize to anybody who's here who might be offended that their home is here, but we think it's charming and we felt it was appropriate to put on this slide. On the CAPE, and especially in this neighborhood within 100 feet of our site or direct abutters, we have many architectural styles. The predominant style is a CAPE style. CAPE has gotten retrofitted many times over many centuries, not over many decades, and over the century here, from standard CAPE to elongated CAPE, to an elevated CAPE, to a twisted CAPE. So we have those types of styles. We've also focused on colonial revival, which you see here. We've also focused on Gambrel style homes, which you see here and here, the CAPE here. Thank you very much for the nickersets who've done a nice job on their property over the years. We also have Greek revival properties here, which is a dominant style here in Harwich Port, and we have elongated farmhouse style. So we've really studied the scale and the massing of these projects to get to our designing. And you'll see our design over quite a few slides. But the design essentially takes these elements that are shown in these precedent photographs and manipulates them into townhouse-style units, all of one-and-a-half or two-story construction, and all with roof forms that either represent a shed, a colonial, a lowered eve height with dormers, or a one-story wraparound porch. The buildings contain a continuation of the language that has been used in the past, which is a traditional double-hung window with a grilled mullion pattern, and the exterior materials are a combination of shingles and clappards. So we have less of a monolithic look across the facade, and we manipulate shingles to clappards as we go from one townhome unit to the next. Next slide, please. These are the four elevations of the building. We'll compare these to the previous project in a moment. So the first slide is the Main Street elevation. And the Main Street elevation is comprised of, on the east side, a Gambrel structure. This would be the face that faces Main Street. This is the face that faces the east side of the building, which is a predominant view as you travel westerly on Route 28. And on the west side, we have a setback CAPE with dormers, and that setback from the street about 55, 65 feet with a single-story porch on the end in each side of the building. On the east elevation, we have the Gambrel, which I just mentioned, with a one-and-a-half story building behind it. In this building, you'll see, in the exhibits to come, has gotten reduced significantly on the east side of the building. This is the setback of the L. So this edge here is that edge, and this piece here is that back piece. On the side elevation that faces Bank Street, again, we have the series of townhome units of one-and-a-half story to two is a continuation of the theme, the manipulation of siding from clappards to shingles, and the setbacks and the recesses in the building to create a non-monolithic facade continues on all four facades. In the rear of the building, which is back here, is two-story units, and then this piece of a facade, which is a series of one-and-a-half story and two-story residents, is this back of the building. Next slide, please. These slides compare the height of the building and the style of the building to the previously discussed project at length. So the first exhibit is, this is the previous condominium facade, and this is the new facade. So the red shows the reduction in the height, which is seven feet 5 inches or 7.4 feet consistently over all four elevations. Other than the elements that I've spoken about previous slide, we have the manipulation of the one-and-a-half to two-story elevation versus the two-and-a-half to three-story piece. We've removed these rounded archways and arborways on the east and west sides of the building, and we put them with a one-story open-air covered porch on each end of the building. On the entry, east side of the building, this is the primary entry to the building for the public and for the residents. There is an entry for the residents only on the west side of the building for quicker access to the village, but this is the primary public entrance, which goes into a lounge and a club room and a community space for the residents. This is the remainder of the facade as we spoke about, but you can see this elevation reduced from the previous elevation below. Next slide, please. The top elevation is the rear elevation, which faces the quarters bed breakfast inn. We have two units, two two-story units in the back, and we have a manipulation of one-and-a-half and two stories across the bar that is recessed significantly from the property line. So this three-story element gets reduced to a two-story element. And then along the west side facing Main Street, we had a dormered look previously. Here, you can see the previous building in red outlined, overshadowing the townhome scheme with a manipulation of one-and-a-half to two-story buildings. Next slide, please. This is just a further example of, in larger detail, what I've just described. So this is a segment of the front elevation along Main Street, which was the tallest part of the building, which was three stories. It stepped down to two-and-a-half stories and eventually stepped down to two. In our revised design, we have nothing over two stories, and we have about 35% to 45% of the building is articulated with a lower eve height and has dormers within the eve line to achieve a one-and-a-half story visual look to the building. So as we've said, the roof overall, roof ridges have dropped seven feet 5 inches, and the eve line has dropped 15 feet from the three-story to the one-and-a-half story. We continue to use some balconies and some porches. We continue to use some bracketed roofs that are just details that create the scale to the living units. Next slide, please. These are some images, 3D images. So this would be one traveling along Main Street, that you'd be traveling west, looking at the east side of the building. So this is the main entry that I spoke about, the Gambrel roof, and then the one-and-a-half story behind it. This is what it replaces, and as you can see, this piece of the building and this mass has been removed for a much smaller wing as it faces east towards the upper in this direction. As Marion has mentioned, if you follow the end of the building here, and I have another slide later to show how we rotated the building back from the Main Street. If you follow this line down, you can see how there's a much larger setback as we get closer to the Embers Drive parking lot entry, whereas in the condominium project, the setback was somewhat consistent at 26 feet or so along the front yard. This piece is held at 27 foot setback, and we go to a setback north of 40 feet on the western side. Next slide, please. This is a frontal view of the facade as you look on Main Street. This is a view as if you were standing in Bayview Road. You can see the third floor has been removed. We say that often tonight, and I apologize for the redundancy, but it's what we've done. And you can see the two-story structures, and then you can see the one-and-a-half story structures that dominate the roof line. We have some dormers here, here, and over here, and then we have a porch on the west end and an entry porch on the east end. So this represents quite a bit of the scale and the mass and change as viewed from the front of the building. Next slide, please. And this is the view from Main Street, traveling eastbound, looking at the west side of the building. And this had a very larger look previously, and it's been significantly simplified, again, with the roof line removed and the elements of the architecture brought in with a colonial revival here and a CAPE style here and some Greek revival, recall of images of peak roofs here. We have an assemblage of a townhome-style architecture that we feel is directly reminiscent of our neighborhood. Next slide, please. So this is the slide where we've taken, the red line and the green represent the previous footprint for the condominium project, and the blue line with the white represents the footprint for the apartment community. So we pretty much held this point, and then we rotated this back from the setback line 18 feet to achieve a 44-foot setback from the property line, 27 feet on the east side to 44 feet here, and then this is the notch that gets set back another 20 feet. So this was the rotation of the building as Marion described, and as you just saw in the renderings. This is the bulk of the building on the east side that has been removed. The closest encroaching point on the east side of the building was 57 feet, and now this point is at 67 feet. And the one-story porch approaches a little bit more, but that's not an occupied area. That's an open-air porch along the east side. This is the primary drive access. Along the west side of Bank Street, we're able to articulate the building again, and we moved the setback by eight feet from 26 feet to 34 feet, again, as well as reducing the building from three stories to two. So that represents how the footprint adjusts to the sight lines and to the scale as seen from the neighborhood. Next slide, please. So I'm going to allow Jeffrey Wyman from Campanelli to talk about the landscaping and
Good evening, members of the Board. So the revised landscape plan incorporates the same fundamental elements as previously shown in the condominium community. This plan keeps everything the Board and the public liked about the original landscape design while adding substantial new community open space, which is a direct response to the feedback we have received throughout this process. The zoning bylaw recommends 10% open space for informal group recreation or community gardens, which we're delivering significantly more than that. So as seen on this plan, about 15% of the entire pervious area is dedicated exclusively to community recreation. That's shown in this back right-hand corner here. In addition to the 15% or 5,000 square feet of community recreation and/or community garden space, we're providing another 1,400 square feet of hardscape community space with a patio and built-in grill area shown right here. This is a good area for gatherings, picnics, or relaxing outdoors. So as mentioned, the landscape plan does incorporate many of the same elements. It continues to include a robust landscape buffer, which wraps the entire site using 100% native plant species. It incorporates a new six-foot height perimeter fence, which provides security and privacy for both residents and neighbors. And we are proposing to keep 10-12-foot evergreen trees shown in the same location as the previous iteration to provide screening to our direct abutters. So you can see that all along the perimeter here. Moving on to the lighting plan, all site lighting remains the same. We are using low-level pedestrian-height ballards that keep light on our property and eliminate spill over into the neighboring yards. The lighting and landscape plans remain fully compliant with zoning requirements, especially for dark-skY friendly design. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Garrett Kelly with Kelly Engineering to give you some site and stormwater updates.
Jeff, for the record, Garrett Horstall with Kelly Engineering Group, civil society engineer of the project. So this is just an updated color rendering of the new proposed site layout from the 2D aerial view. As mentioned, this does show the angulation of the building away from Bank Street. We have kept the curb cut onto Route 28 at the general same location. The point just died, sorry, the point from there. But in doing so, though, as part of that curb cut realignment, just like shifting of it, it does allow us the under-the-50-foot waiver request on the overall curb cut width and the roadway width, so we have to remove that from the waiver request as part of the submission. And so continuing into the site, we have a 24-foot wide drive aisle with parking as soon as you onto the left, three spaces as soon as you get past the main entry on the front door. And then we have a dedicated parking aisle on the left-hand side with six EV-ready spaces as required by the latest stretch energy code. And then continuing on towards the back of the site, we have provided some additional EV-ready spaces, and then in the back right, there's about 12, or 14, excuse me, tandem spaces, which we've agreed to, as recommended as well by VHB, to align these with the two-bedroom units. Reason for tandem space is we're trying to save impervious surfaces on the site, and this allows us to have more open space, et cetera, at the rear of the... at the rear of the lawn here in the back. And just to cap the coverage that we've done here, we have about a 3,300-square-foot decrease in coverage from our previous proposal. And then existing Sunday School site today is about an 800-square-foot decrease in overall impervious. And there's still a significant 16,500-square-foot reduction of paving surfaces on the site from what exists on Sunday School today. We are increasing the roof surface. However, I think pavement is more of a thing you want to reduce more just in terms of dirty water. Roof front officer, clean it off. Jeff, next slide. And so the stormwater program stayed a similar design to what we previously proposed. There's a large subsurface recharge system directly underneath the driveway as you went to the site. All of the impervious areas throughout the site are captured through a combination of deep-sunk catch basins treated with water quality devices to provide required TSS to move on water quality prior to infiltration, consistent with mass DEP stormwater handle requirements. And utilities on the left-hand side, we have water, gas, and electric serving the utility rooms over there. This is the exact similar location that was previously proposed here, so we've kept that consistent with this proposal along with the transformer location here as well. And in the orange, we still have a larger septic system. We will reengage BSE to redesign a smaller septic system, but it will be a similar format. We'll still provide the nitrogen removal components, et cetera. However, it will be about-- we assume about a third less size just because of the bedroom count has reduced. So that orange block will condense within the site. And again, the 100-year storm is fully contained within the site, within the stormwater management system on the site. As it does today, these sites all handle to leaching pits with no proper treatment. We are upgrading a significant stormwater upgrade here with modern DEP-compliant stormwater management system throughout the site. So there was one other-- a couple of waiver requests still as part of the project. One for a section of 22-foot-wide driveway aisles and 9-by-18 parking spaces. Bylaw requires 24-foot aisles and 9-by-20. We've requested a waiver and provided the following diagrams to show that-- to support that waiver request that shows that a fire truck, a box truck, and a passenger vehicle can safely access the site and access the parking spaces. So the fire prevention officer for the Town of Harwich recently corresponded today that he was okay with this plan that you see here. So this is the Harwich fire truck through the site. And this is the-- one of the passenger vehicles. We're not requesting a waiver for any of these aisles, but the 9-by-18 space with-- we are. So this is sort of the most restrictive space to access into. Steve Rhodes with VHB, I think, has reviewed these as well. I had some correspondence from him this afternoon. He indicated he was all set with these diagrams as well. And then the last one, this is to support the 9-by-18 and 22-foot-wide driveway aisle width in the back. Again, accessing the most restrictive parking spaces and demonstrating that we safely maneuver into and out of the space. So Chapel Engineering, Traffic Engineering, not here tonight, however, I'll give a broad overview, recap public traffic. I think it was highlighted at a high level by Miriam previously. VHB has concurred that the site distances are adequate. There is one outstanding-- not issue, but comment that we are aware of in coordination with VHB and DOT that their coordination-- once we file our access permit with DOT, to do what we can to trim some of the overgrowth within the state highway right-of-way, which VHB has concurred with us that we would do that during the access permit just to clean up any overgrowth within the right-of-way that they would recommend along with the state highway recommendations as well. So we do expect a trip reduction just from the purposes of people in this building as demonstrated in this letter from Chapel Engineering as well as the concurring with VHB's peer review law.
Thank you. This may be a bit of a non sequitur because I do want to talk about the Melrose for a moment before I get into the rest of conclusion to your presentation. The impact of the reduction of footprint of the apartment proposal is significant. You can look at the footprint of the Melrose, which is 29,025. And here, it's 17,587. The Melrose is 39% larger in terms of footprint, and the square footage-- the gross floor area is significant as well. If you look-- and I just want to make this emphasis too-- the apartment project, as it rotates on the left-hand side towards Ember, there's the section that's closest to Ember. And when you're looking at the elevations, it might look like that elevation. The front facade is all connected. There's a significant setback there. And when it is built, you will notice. The center part of the front facade is about 117 feet wide. It's set back on the right-hand side by about 47 square feet. So to me, that would be the front facade, which is 164 feet. If you include that setback portion on the Ember side, which is set back by about 25 feet and about 70 feet from the road, that's another 32 feet. So altogether, it's less than the Melrose. It's roughly 196 or 197 square feet, where the Melrose is 207. But I think visually, it will certainly compare to 575 May, which is about 137 or 138 square feet, the facade of that structure. So we think it's in keeping with the neighborhood, even in terms of larger structures that are very nearby. So briefly, we have gone over all the requirements for the special permits. We need two special permits. We've done this several times, but this is a revised project, so I want to go over this again with you all. For the multifamily use special permit, this project, as did the other versions of this project, meet all the requirements. It's connected to municipal water system. There's a minimum room space requirement. That is met. The septic systems, which are IA here, and parking requirements are exceeded. Again, the parking number here is less, but there are fewer people here. And it is, again-- actually, when you look at the bedroom count versus the number of parking spaces, we're providing a little more parking spaces per bedroom than we did in the condo proposal. So I think we have adequate parking for how this project will be used. The outside entrances are covered. The recreation areas, that discretionary requirement for multifamily, is met and exceeded. The expected benefits of the change in use is developed. I'm not going to go through the first bullet points. These, frankly, are the same benefits that would have been-- we believe would have been provided by the condominium project. But with the introduction of the apartment use versus condominium use, we think that could be considered a significant benefit. Yearly rentals of apartments are needed here. We've looked at other projects. Schoolhouse, for example. I think The Chronicle recently had an article about the Schoolhouse project that said that there were 40 applicants for the seven market rate units. And the first person to enter a lease for one of the market rate units was a long-term Harwich town employee. So we believe that this is-- we believe all housing could be of benefit to the community, but the apartment complex-- can provide significant benefit to people who live here year-round. And the intention is to rent this year-round. And we believe that the people who will rent this will be year-round residents. Again, I just have this next slide, the findings for the special permit, either 32551. It's here in case we need to reference it. I won't go through all the elements tonight because we, by this time, are all familiar. But in conclusion, we have presented a conforming, as to be mentioned, this project since March through June and to now. We have presented a project that has been responsive to town staff, board, and neighbor concerns. And I think it's helpful just to list these because it has been a long process and a lot of changes have been made. As of now, with traffic, it's shown to be, as the project has throughout, to be less than the current use in high season. The impact on neighborhood roads and intersections design has been confirmed by VHB to meet the standards required. In terms of privacy, noise, lighting, and screening, we have eliminated the community roof decks, provided year-round rental apartments, which we believe removes the concern about short-term rentals. And we've provided a statement regarding short-term rentals that we can answer questions if you care to. The side and the rear property grounds are landscaped and fenced. Lighting is shown to conform to the Harwich lighting bylaw with environmental impacts. Garrett's just mentioned the stormwater plan versus the existing conditions. As he was saying that, I was reminded that the existing conditions include 83 parking spaces. There's a lot of asphalt there now. And this is going to be-- the runoff will be treated in an up-to-date way rather than the way it is now. The reductions of bedrooms from 40-- sorry, 60 to 41 create commensurate reductions in the gallons per day and the nitrogen loading were provided by an IA system which exceeds what's required of the state and by the Harwich Board of Health. There are generous plantings that followed the conservation agents' plant list, eliminated all of the subsurface parking, reduced the site coverage as compared to existing conditions. In terms of massing and scale, and this is really where the rubber hits the road, we've provided a structure that would be allowed by right if it was a single-family residence in the commercial district. That sounds crazy, but it's true. I thought of it as I was driving from Wolfley Freeway. I called the building commissioner. I double-checked to make sure. That is true. It's conforming to the setbacks. It's conforming to the height. So in terms of impact and in terms of density, we really think we're at a point where-- and also significantly, the design, we're thinking we're at a point where it's appropriate for the neighborhood and it fits into the neighborhood character. The footprint in the gross floor area are 40% less than the multifamily use at the Melrose immediately across the street. And unlike the Melrose, it was designed without the need for a variance or even a ZBA special permit relief. The apartment, I'll say again, is a multifamily use and it's clearly needed. We've looked at the Schoolhouse, the Dylan James and 72 Route 28. What I can tell, the Schoolhouse is fully rented. I can see no units for rent on any of the websites. I've reached out to the Dylan James. They had, I think, 26 units developed, and I think there may be four units available now. But I don't think that there are more than that available. There's a need for modern market rate apartments in every village and not only West Harwich. There's not a modern apartment building in Harwichport. We believe we designed one that will fit into the neighborhood. We increased the number of units-- the increased number of units for rent, we believe, will help with the scarcity issue and provide more flexibility to potential and existing tenants. When there are very few market rate apartments available, it's very difficult to leave one apartment and have a choice to move to another. You're stuck. And so having more units available should be helpful to tenants. Garrett has mentioned the waivers. We've eliminated the need for the discretionary 10% recreational space waiver. We've eliminated the need for the width of the driveway at the entrance on Route 28. All of the other waivers remain. They've been reviewed by VHB. We believe the site works as developed. We truly want to thank you all for your time. This has been quite a process. We appreciate the comments. We welcome any questions that you or the public may have. We stand ready to listen and respond as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy Rose. Thank you to the applicants, and to your team. Outstanding. Look forward to hearing from Ms. Flynn from the Town of Harwich planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As indicated, this is a case PD 202511. The project is for a multifamily special permit as well as site plan review special permit. This process is started on May 13, 2025. The project location is 606 Route 28, Harwichport, map and parcel number 14218-2. The zoning districts are the commercial village, village-commercial overlay district, and the residential density. The development type is a residential apartment building consisting of 28 units. The lot area is 76,230 square feet, equalling 1.75 acres. And as the applicant indicated, there's been a reduction in the number of requested waivers from five to four. Since the last public hearing in October, the applicant has submitted new information and revised plans to better address the community character concerns in issues that had been raised relative to building size, scale, massing, as well as potential privacy and noise issues with impacts to the surrounding neighbors. The applicant has also addressed potential groundwater impacts from nitrogen loading as well as the subgrade parking garage by eliminating the subgrade parking garage. And the-- so the plans include some of the following key changes. There's been an overall reduction in the building's footprint, height, scale, and massing. The overall architectural redesign has taken into consideration the surrounding residential properties and the character of Harwichport to better fit within the village neighborhood. The entire elimination of the subgrade parking garage has been a critical concern from members of the public as well as the board. The elimination of the common outdoor roof decks has also been noted in the revised plans. The sidewalk along Route 28 has also been included, and the applicant has agreed to work with MasCOT in terms of coordinating the installation of the sidewalk at the applicant's expense. And the revised plans have changed from condominium ownership to rental apartment units. And in terms of the overall reduction in the size of the project, originally, the square footage was at 59,251 square feet. The applicant-- the revised plans include 35,174 gross square feet, where there's been a significant reduction. And that's also not including the square footage from the underground parking garage. Just several other pieces of information to keep in mind. There has also been a reduction in the total number of bedrooms from 60 to 41. And that will also help with the septic system and some of the concerns-- And that will also help with the septic system and some of the concerns of nitrogen loading into the groundwater and our overall water quality impacts to the Wishmere Harbor. The project has also met all of the zoning requirements relative to the building heights, setbacks, and site coverage. Again, for multifamily special permit, building coverage is not required. There's no percentage requirement for that. Excuse me, and... In terms of peer review, the applicant has got, has worked with VHB's peer review on the following issues for comprehensive stormwater and their illicit discharge regulations, the planning board's stormwater and drainage review process, as well as traffic, parking, and the generation, in addition to the pedestrian connectivity. For all of each of those issues, the applicant has addressed concerns raised by our peer review and has also agreed to place to the recommended conditions from VHB as well. The applicant this evening also did provide revised stormwater management plans, which VHB did find satisfactory. And if there are to be any other changes, the select board will be, will also evaluate the stormwater and illicit discharge permit. And the revised septic plans will also be Board of Health reviews. You know, those issues have been vetted at the local level, and VHB again has been, found the applicant's application was satisfactory. And that's my overall summary of this one. If there are any questions from the board?
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. I'd like to open it up to questions from the board, please.
Emily? Thank you for the very thoughtful and thorough update and presentation today. How will this project be managed and maintained?
Can you talk into the microphone, please?
How will the project be managed and maintained, the board? Is there a management company that will take that? Is there onsite staffing?
There will be a management company. They have, they're bringing on an apartment complex like Saint Dennisport, and they have a management agent there, and they'll be a management company here, possibly the same.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody? Alan?
Yeah, yeah. The only question I had, I thank you very much for the designs. I think they're, I'll echo what Emily said. The tandem parking, I haven't seen that before. When I see something like that, I envision fourteen bucks there, parking. So that's, that's a spigot. Can you explain a little bit more about that?
Sure. The tandem parking, the real important thing is that the people who are sharing the tandem parking have to coordinate. And so that's why there's a condition. So the two bedroom units would, or some of the two bedroom units would have, would share those two spaces. They have designated spaces, where other spaces on the lot do not be designated particular apartment units. And so, you know, it could be that they're husband and wife, and they have keys in a particular place. Roommates, they have keys in a particular place, so someone could move a car if needed. And it creates more green space. It gives the opportunity for that. It's a trade-off. There's a way to design it without the tandem parking, but it takes away a lot of the green space.
I think that, Harry, do you have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment that just exceeds my wildest imagination for what you would come back here with. And it shows an enormous amount of flexibility on the part of the applicant as well as a willingness to coordinate and cooperate with all of the parties involved. And I was extremely impressed with that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harry. If there's anybody from the public that would like to address the board, I invite you to come up to the podium. Is there a sign-in sheet? Just want to make sure.
There's one back here.
Oh, there's, you have it in the back, okay. Please sign the sign-in sheet, you know, come up to the podium and speak to us. Thank you.
Do you have a comment on it?
I would like to say that Harry underestimates my enthusiasm for this substantive and profound changes that make a very clear and manifest acknowledgement of the concerns of the neighbors. I can only imagine the amount of work involved. And I think that there's probably nobody in this room that doesn't recognize the astonishing talent that went into this transformation in the spirit of the community here. And I want to thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Is that better?
I don't know.
How's that?
No. I don't know. Will these work remote? Because I'm happy to... Are we there?
Good evening, members of the board. At record, my name is Jeff Herden. I'm the attorney, the senior associate, and brewster. I'm here this evening on behalf of Bob Barbour-Nicherson, where I directed butters to a project at six oh six Route Twenty-eight. I want to begin by echoing many of the sentiments from the board and thanking the applicant and its representatives for making some real changes here in the project. And this is a big step in the right direction, so thank you for listening to the community so far. That said, there remain some specific conditions that the board should impose to ensure that the criteria under three twenty-five fifty-one K, which is in the bylaw for the SaaS. The primary concern at this point is that the applicant has proposed to include a study in each of the twenty-eight units. As for three twenty-five fifty-one Q, the Harwich zoning bylaw, a habitable room in a multifamily dwelling unit must have a minimum square footage of not less than one hundred and twenty square feet. And the Harwich Board of Health regulations also require habitable rooms to have things like egress windows and, you know, things like that for safety. So by adding a study to each unit, I think we're kind of opening the door for increasing material population that's actually in the apartment building. And I think we just need to be making sure we're doing something to protect from overpopulation. For example, if each of the units had someone housed in the study room, you would increase from eighty-two units up to one hundred and ten, whereas the projected population first time around is one hundred and twenty. So this would be problematic for two reasons. First, the proposed Title V septic floor capacity has decreased from six thousand six hundred to four thousand five hundred and ten gallons per day, which is rated for forty-one bedrooms or eighty-two people, but not more. So by potentially overloading the number of residents, strain on the septic system and fire rate would be increased. Similarly, you know, increasing the number of residents just would increase the traffic, noise, congestion, and things like that. So simply put, there's a risk to the community here, and we need to make sure that the study rooms are properly addressed. So we propose that a condition be added with the following language. Each unit owner shall submit an annual affidavit to the Harwich Building Department testing that the study is not used as a habitable room. We think this is a minimally invasive condition that really makes sure that, you know, there isn't overcrowding in the apartment building and it doesn't really bother the residents that are asking for a headcount and everything like that. Second, the applicant did a great job describing some architectural changes that are made. I think it would be helpful if the applicant spoke to some of the materials that would be used for the facade. We would propose a condition, though it's not absolute, but we think it would be helpful if the applicant chose seater shingles or sheets for the facade. But, you know, they did do a good job and were open to the board talking themselves into it. And then finally, you know, there is a, the great job of decreasing the parking, especially the removal of the parking lot. But we really need to consider how to protect the buyers from overpopulation. And so we think a proper condition would be that all parking is contained on-site. Parking by residents or guests or neighboring public with private roads is prohibited. The applicant shall put signage as allotted by the Harwich Department of Public Works and the Department of Superiority and include lease provisions, specifically notifying applicants of this requirement. And the applicant should enforce this through public. We feel that such a condition would protect the residents from unwanted congestion because of, you know, people coming over to some of the units in parking on the road because they feel that they can't park in the parking lot, which is kind of protecting the butters from this kind of unwanted congestion. So by addressing these three conditions, the board can effectively balance the needs of the butters with the goals of the applicant, ensuring that the project proceeds in a manner consistent with the character of the neighborhood and the requirements of the Harwich zoning bylaw. These conditions provide clear expectations, promote ongoing compliance, and help safeguard the surrounding residential area such that a special family can appropriately use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herden. Is there anybody else that would choose to address the board?
Barbara Nickerson, Route Twenty-eight. Bob's passing out the proposed conditions that we gathered yesterday. We had a meeting of about twenty-five of butters over at the Melrose and had a really great hour-long meeting conversation. And I was, I was pretty much charged with bringing some of their questions, concerns, or possible conditions, whatever you want to call it. And I don't think any of these are going to cost Mr. DeMarco any money, so not to worry. One of the, but one of the resounding questions, thoughts of the folks there was as far as the subletting of apartments. They're concerned that people start subletting the apartments, that we'll have the Verbo Airbnb issue and everything like that. I'm not sure that that's going to be the case, but like I said, they asked me to bring it to you to say that they're not in favor of any of the subletting of the apartments, which we explained to them thirty-day lease for the state mandate. They didn't have a problem with that. They were more concerned as far as people like, they would have had with the condos and stuff, but it's out there. I would, we would, we would like, I spoke with the owners of six sixteen this morning, and first off, they do appreciate the eight-foot fence over there versus the six-foot rob. But when we talked about the hedge, they said, well, you know, if there's, whatever they decide, whatever y'all decide to do with the hedge, if they just be kind of kept in the loop on that, that would be great with them. So no big deal there. Question I have is as far as replacement of the existing trees. And actually, this kind of includes a question, too, on the landscape plan. On the original landscape that y'all had proposed several months back, you had shown some of the existing trees on the north side of where the tandem parking is and where the green space is, and I didn't see them on this plan. I didn't, just didn't know if it was just, wasn't, didn't transfer from one pile to another or not. But just, just a thought that perhaps if we lose any of the existing trees, it's been five years of construction because of the construction, can we, you know, look at replacement trees so we don't have, have a void where we don't need it? Excuse me. The residents yesterday also requested that, and I think you have it under plans, that a stop sign be installed as you're leaving the driveway to enter Route Twenty-eight. So because of the, we have a curve in the line of sight there also issue, so they felt that a stop sign might be wild. And I wasn't sure where we were as far as submitting a full set of revised plans, if that's already done. It wasn't on the website earlier today, or yesterday. It might be done. Just want to make sure that those are done before we vote, so we know what we're voting on, that y'all are voting on, not me. And this is a personal request. There's a tree, one of the trees, there's five of the big trees out front that have, you know, you keep in four, and the one is right there between your driveway and six sixteen property line. And one of the engineers had said that it's in the line of sight, which I don't necessarily agree with. But when y'all have that conversation with VHB and MasTOD, if you conclude me, I would appreciate it. I'd hate to lose that forty-year-old tree and not have anything to ever replace it. So on a personal level, I want to thank you, Mr. DeMarco and the rest of the campaigner team. You really stepped up to the plate. You listened to us, and we very, very much appreciate it. The butters that we met with yesterday wanted to make sure that I told you all that also. They appreciate it. They are looking forward to welcoming our new neighbors when it is built and they move in with open arms, because we are a pretty small neighborhood. Those of us that, for those of us that live here are full year, full round, no, year-round, sorry. I would like to thank you because, in fact, I was the one up here beating all the time as far as we need apartments. We don't need more condos. We need apartments for workforce housing. And I think this is going to make a big dent into what we need within Harwich, Harwichport, especially either for seasonal workers or for full-time workers. And I'd like to thank the planning board. This has been a long process for everybody. Appreciate your support in this, listening to everything, both us as well as the applicant. And Mr. Chairman, I don't know where you go from now as far as voting or not voting, or et cetera, et cetera. But I'm really looking forward to getting some of my Tuesday nights back.
Thank you, Mrs. McNicherson. We don't, however, have that opportunity.
Thank you so much, all of you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Nickerson. Before we take anybody else, I wanted to give the applicant an opportunity to reply to both what was addressed by the attorney, Herden, as well as by Mrs. Nickerson.
Right. I do need to coordinate to talk with my client. So if we could possibly have, you know, a bit of a break at some point to do that.
Would you like for us to hear more testimony?
Sure.
Take like another, a break and then?
That's great.
Because I think we're probably close to closing the hearing.
That's perfect.
Okay?
Are we going to take a straw poll again, see if our efforts were recognized?
How are they going to seem? I mean, I'm happy to do that if this would be satisfactory. But I, it would satisfy, but I didn't think that for the sake of the public input at this point, I'd rather keep the phone open and wide.
That's great. Thank you.
But if you don't, you know... Yes, ma'am?
I did not see a sign-in sheet.
I think our friend Peter's got it back there, Mr. Rory.
I'll sign it when I...
Great, thank you.
Marilyn McDonough, Quasimlaine. A couple of quick questions for the applicants. Will the terms of the leases be annual, multi-year, with the ability to go month-to-month?
I think the application, the applicant says thirty days, correct? With the desire to have annual tenants, right? Wasn't that what you said?
Right. The intent is to have annual leases. Sometimes annual leases become month-to-month leases. And so that's the way we anticipate this operating.
And will these units be rented furnished or unfurnished?
Unfurnished.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonough. Ms. McDonough, the sign-in sheet is right with, right here, it's right there. Mr. McCaslin? Mr. McCaswell, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Thank you to the applicant, thank you to the board. A few things that were unclear. Has the building shifted at all to the back of the property line, or is it roughly in the same spot?
It's roughly the same spot.
Okay. And the, you showed an awful lot of architectural drawings of the left, of the east and the west. We didn't see a whole lot of the back. You have architectural drawings of the back of the building?
Yes, those are in the signs, yes.
Tonight?
Yes.
Few of us in the back, bro, didn't see. That would be great, thanks.
If I'm not mistaken, those were partially grayed out in the.
So, it's important, I'm sorry, Mr. Herden?
Michael.
So when we look at the back of the building, as Duncan just.
I'm going to show you some elevations of the back of the building in just a second. When we look at the back of the building, you're going to see, this is one of them. You're going to see the back of the building, and as Duncan just pointed out, the back of the building includes the short piece, and then the other piece is faded out because it's set back another 100. You see that in the diagram? Great, thank you, Michael. So from there. Great, okay. So this was the front of the building from Main Street, the east side to the west side. This is the east side of the building, which faces in a butter, as Mrs. Nickerson just discussed. This is the side of the building, as it faces the Bank Street residence, and this is the rear of the building, as it faces the quarters bed and breakfast. So there's two units in the back from right here. And then this piece that's set back is faded here to show that it's not in line with that. So that's the rear of the building right there. Any further questions?
Looking from the Route 28 to the back of the building on the right-hand side, which you proposed green space, that green space, is that just simply grass? Is there any particularly use to that other than a lawn?
The green space is used as a discretionary recreational area. So it will be lawn area in the middle, and it will be perimeter plantings, as Jeff described, along the fence area. And the middle will be left open for use by the residents. It may be a small child play area, it may be a place for residents to have a catcher for football, it may be a place to play cornhole, it may be anything that the residents determine to use as their backyard.
Thank you. And thank you to Mr. DiMarco, who took the time to meet with us out on-site several times. I'm hoping that we can still incorporate some of the additional trees and additional landscape in the back of those back residents that will be affected by this.
Those trees that we promised that day are still unplanned.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, excellent, and thank you.
And if they're not enough, come see.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else to address? Rocky.
Hello. I have the signup list. Do you want me to give it to you?
We'll, we'll collect it later. You can leave it on the podium.
Okay. I don't know.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Rocky Clark. My family has a house off Davis Lane, which is on Bayview Road in Harwich Port. And I have one real simple comment, and that is, years ago, the Melrose made a huge effort to put shutters on the building, and it really calmed it down and made it much more colonial. And when I look at these pictures, I say to myself, it would be so easy to add shutters. It just makes it colonial, ties it into the neighborhood. If you look at the pictures of the other houses in that neighborhood, they all have shutters, and it's just something that is a detail that I think is important. Anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the board? Yes?
Sorry, Barbara Nickerson again. I forgot my reading last, so I'll show you off. As a final follow-up, I should have said that because of our meeting yesterday and the plans that we saw and everything, the group of the butters that we met with yesterday, there were about 25 of us, feel that we can wholeheartedly support this project at this time.
Thank you. There's one name on our list here that, who has the first name, Peter Borey. Would you care to address the board?
No. Barbara, Barbara, governor.
Okay, great, thank you so much. I see we don't have any more comments from the public. I don't know if we have any more remarks made by the board about the conditions. We can, we can still close the hearing and discuss the conditions, I guess, online, correct?
No. The applicant has proposed the following conditions.
Right.
So that has to be done before we close.
Before we close the hearing.
To omit any testimony, which that would be testimony. So they could agree to some, some of the conditions that were proposed can't really be imposed, but if they're agreed upon.
So I think what we're looking at is this final conversation here, framed by our incredible gratitude to your dedication to our neighborhood and the town, the village and the town. And I open up what, I'd love to hear what your responses are to these requests.
Marion asked if we could, um, conference for a moment?
Absolutely. How much time would you like?
Five minutes?
Take five or take 10. Okay?
Thank you, Mary.
So we don't stand in recess until it looks like 7:54 or 7:55? 7:55, let's say 7:55. In session, it's.
Yeah, that's reasonable. We could do that. They will not sublet apartments, or tenant, will not allow a tenant to sublet apartment. They will coordinate.
Without prior consent?
Without prior consent. They will coordinate to the best of their abilities with owners of 616 Route 28 on plans for hedges. They will agree to replace existing trees if they die within two years of construction. They will install a stop sign at the end of the driveway prior to entering Route 28. They will submit a full set of updated plans to the planning board before a vote is taken. And they will agree to a condition that all parking shall be contained on-site.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board at this time?
A full set of plans before a vote, does that mean we have to wait and continue the hearing and come back?
No, we're going to close the hearing.
We have the full set.
We have the full set, great.
I just wanted to make one comment and my personal thanks to the applicant. When I went to leave the house tonight and put on my down coat, I remembered the first meeting was in May, where I couldn't even know where my down coat was. Thank you for staying with us through all of these seasons. Also, you had an iconic property of the Sunday School that created a lot of emotion during this time, not to talk about ice cream, but just applaud you in getting through all of these pieces and parts with the community and with the board. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? I'll just simply add my profound gratitude for the tenacity and the qualitative improvement in the design and the enhancement that this will represent to this part of town. I honestly think that the variegated facade designs, the, the kind of sensibility of integrating related architectural motifs, I think the overall layout disposition, the massing, and particularly the sacrifices that were made in terms of size, volume, and footprint were amazing. And I just want to thank you, because I know that I have a rough, rough but clear idea of what is involved in this. I think this is going to be a great ornament to our, to our village and to our town. So I would like to entertain a motion to clear, to close the hearing.
Second.
I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'd like to take a motion with the person here.
And second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. We are going to then integrate the, the conditions into a series for approval and voting on, on the, the application at our next scheduled meeting, which is January 13th, 2026. I'd like to entertain a motion to enact that general principle. Motion to continue so we can finish, conclude deliberations with a full and complete set of conditions as agreed upon by the applicant.
So the move that we accept the condition, we meet, I'm sorry, repeat what you said.
Continue.
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 Continue the.
The meeting anyway.
Meeting.
So we can.
So we can deliberate on the conditions.
As finalized in black and white by the applicant.
Right, on January 13th, no, sooner than 6:00.
Yes, by the second.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. Do we have to do anything more than just agendaize that, that item and bring it up to a vote? I mean, we do, it is, we don't have a hearing to do, we don't have to bring it up.
It's at the request of the planning department. They, they need the time to prepare, correct?
It is just an agenda item.
Okay, yeah, so it's not, okay.
And a draft decision will be presented to the board.
Correct.
With conditions.
Great. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. Thank you, Liz Rose.
So, Steve, given your condition, would you like to tell the details of these requirements?
Also, I want to thank you, because I got a chance to put a deep thought on that.
Oh, thanks.
It's really, it's an iteration one and iteration two. It's amazing, right?
Good, yeah, good.
So we're at the end of our hearing. If anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn. So, look.
So, Phil, when?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And it's unanimous, we are not.